Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled, it's very conscious board supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of flag, please join me.
Pledge our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We did have an executive session, August 28th, for purposes of a legal discussion before the last meeting. And at this point, I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there is anyone who would like to address the board, I would ask that you raise your hand and if you are on Zoom, you can click the raise hand button to be recognized. You will state your name and address for the record and then address the board. So sir, please come forward. You want to address the board?
Thank you for hearing me out.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Savello and I live at 371 North Main Street in Manchester.
All right, typically, we limit comments to citizens of the community, taxpayers of the community. If you have brief remarks, I'll allow them.
Well, the reason why I'm here is because I have a little hot dog stand and I was set up in Raymond and Flanagan's parking lot, selling hot dogs. They got red flagged for me being in the parking lot. It was a private parking lot. I don't know why they did that, to have food trucks in there. On occasion, I was there on the weekends and this is why I'm here for, to ask the township if I could set up there. Again, it was on private property. I have a food license here, I just want to show you, saying that when I bought the license from the state of Pennsylvania, they said that as long as I have proof, as long as I have permission from the person who owns the property, that I could set up on their property. It doesn't matter where in Pennsylvania, as long as I have permission on their property and not on township property. Now, I did have two flags, probably on your property, on the grass part of it. I said, I don't need those flags anymore, I take them down. But I'd just like to get permission. I'm just a retired veteran, me and my wife, this is a supplemental income. We just want permission to set up on their property. That's all we're asking. I know it's a big, excellent lot for the township to do that. It became a hardship for us for not to set up on their property because this is, this helps pay our bills, plus we give tax dollars to the township for being there. And that's why I'm here for, to see if you guys would let me, permit me to set up on their property.
That's...
And there was, excuse me, there was one more other thing. I asked if there was a permit, if I could apply for a permit, they said there's no permit and I said, I don't understand that. And I was willing to pay for a permit to set up on their property. I had permission from them to set up on their property. It's for me to encourage people to come to their store and look at furniture and buy furniture from their...
So, John, what, how does this work? We've had this with Christmas trees and flowers and a lot of other things in the township.
Mr. Swamley, I'm going to speak to this because I spoke to this gentleman on the telephone. Our zoning ordinance doesn't currently permit what this gentleman is doing on the parking lot at Raymond Flanagan. It wasn't that I want him not to be able to do it, if you will.
I understand.
The ordinance doesn't allow it.
Right.
So there was no permitting application to which to submit to ultimately provide to him because we do not, we do not allow it as the ordinance is currently written.
And if my recollection is correct, if a store has a sale or something, an auxiliary function, that is part of the type of business that they already do, that they could sign the request for a permit to do that. For example, in the Ollies parking lot, the Christmas tree sales was auxiliary to the Christmas decorations and wrapping paper and everything else that they sold in their store. So in that case, it was allowed because they had the support of the store directly and it was an auxiliary use to what the store already did. I think my understanding would be that a furniture store is not a restaurant.
That would be correct.
Mr. Swamley, if you, and Mr. Savello, if you look at the ordinance, Spring and Sperry Township ordinances, it's Section 325-131 Temporary Use Structure that will provide you with the framework of what is and is not permitted for the type of activity, I believe, that you're describing.
Right. So I'm not permitted to set up there anymore.
Unless you find a place that you are an auxiliary use to the business that is already there and they will sponsor you, that would be correct. The ordinance does not allow it.
So if Raymond Flanagan sponsored me, is that would be okay?
You need to go through the process with the township.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I'm not, he's not, Mr. Swamley is the supervisor that it really needs to go through, Mr. Heilmann and the rest of the township and follow the process with that.
May I ask, is there a permit that I could apply for, something?
There is, there is some paperwork to...
We do have a special event permit in the township. However, what this gentleman has described to me through our telephone conversation is this is not something that's a special event. This would be something that he's doing on a daily basis or at minimum over the weekends and we don't have a mechanism within the township zoning ordinance to allow that. We just, we do not. And again, I don't have an issue with somebody trying to make a living, I get that, I know the board gets that as well. But there is just no mechanism within our township ordinance as it currently written to allow him to have a hot dog stand in a parking lot of a furniture store.
So are there some solutions that come to mind, Randall, of where he could set up?
Like Food Truck Friday?
Well, I surmise our director of Parks and Recs is here this evening, maybe she can answer that better than I. I think that's a little different scenario than otherwise permitted in the township. We are exploring these possibilities in the new version of the zoning ordinance, but that's not the one that's currently, we're regulating. We're regulating the one that has been adopted many years ago and it doesn't take into account some of the things that have occurred over time in regard to food trucks and other things similar to that.
So you understand that we're not looking to have flower shops and fireworks stands and other food trucks just go set up in parking lots and ask the tenants of the...
I understand.
For permission to do that. So there's a valid reason for not allowing this to happen.
Okay.
It's not that we're trying to target you and trying to damage your livelihood, but the ordinances of the township were written for a very specific reason.
Are you guys going to try to change that in the future?
I don't know what it's currently set up to be in the new comprehensive plan, but...
The township always looks at their ordinances and makes adjustments as needed per the requests of the, or per the guidance of the supervisors who are in turn elected by the constituents in the townships.
Yeah, I was only set up there on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, and that's it. That's the only, that's the only two days I wanted to do this. All the other days, you know, I didn't want it, it's just the weekends, that's all, Saturday and Sunday, that's all I wanted.
The way it is now, that's not allowed. I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me speak my piece. Thank you, bye.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? All right, then we will move on to engineering reports. Diana.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have no updates to the report that was submitted. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you. John?
I think the only update I could provide is for our sidewalk project. We finally got approval now to publish our public documents, put them on the internet. Prior to that, we have to mail them, mail all the adjoining property owners and then we could publish the TASSA drawings on our website and then we have to have a safety sidewalk meeting with PennDOT and then we could put this thing out to bid to, on the PennDOT Electronic Construction Management System. God help us.
Any questions for the engineer? Thanks, John. All right, next we have our consent agenda, two items.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A and B as listed on the agenda.
It's acting.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're at bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. Authorization to execute 2026 Agreement with Klug Animal Control.
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual contract renewal. We've utilized Klug Animal Control for several years and are satisfied with the service and recommend another year.
They're the only ones that bid on that, aren't they?
It's not really a bid, but yes, there's only, I think, two in the whole county, they cover the whole county and this is the one that covers our area, but that doesn't mean anything, the service is adequate.
And they don't do cats.
They do not do cats.
And does the other one? Probably not.
No, the other one's in the Hanover area.
Oh, all right.
Move to authorize executing the 2026 Agreement with Klug Animal Control Services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have authorization for township manager to bid and accept future electricity supply contract.
Mr. Chairman, the electric supply that we buy, the current contract that we have expires at end of December 2026. And because we're a large user of electricity, the wastewater treatment plant has a $70,000 a month electric bill, so, and we do get good pricing. The electricity market fluctuates daily as far as pricing and it's dependent on all these different factors, the new data center craze is one of those things. So the recommendation is to allow me to, when the broker says now's a good time to put the bid out, it's given me the authorization to put that bid out, get the pricing, accept that, the best pricing for the township, and then come to the board afterwards for formalization of that process.
So that you lock it in at the lowest rate?
Correct.
What are, do we have an idea where they could be, these rates could be right now? I know, recognize that they fluctuate daily.
They are in, currently, we pay like five cents kilowatt hour and we're probably going to be in the eights.
Okay.
So it is a significant increase. It's not detrimental, but it is significant. So our hope is that they fluctuate sometime below the current rate and the broker thinks that it might, with a mild fall, it might. So it's not going to get worse than today, but it certainly has the opportunity of getting slightly better. And we're talking tenths of cents, but it matters with the amount of electricity that we purchase.
So our current contract goes through the end of next year?
Correct. And then this future one would start at the end of...
Of that.
Of that and go forward.
So we're not giving up a favorable rate?
The five cents.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right. That's a, that's a percentage increase.
Mm-hmm.
A hefty percentage increase.
Yeah. Wonder if it's time to start thinking about solar on our land?
No.
Would be cost benefit analysis there.
We'll have that discussion later.
Than that, or a mini nuclear power plant?
I'd go for the mini nuclear power plant over solar cells. I know somebody who could build one of those.
I bet you do. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the township manager to bid and accept future electricity supply contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Don is saying aye, by the way.
I have a question.
All right, subdivision and land development, Galleria Apartments LLC, 2899 Whiteford Road.
To the board, this is somewhat similar to what you had seen earlier in 2025. Galleria Apartments LLC was here for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which ultimately Board of Supervisors did adopt. They are now coming back to the Board of Supervisors for the acceptance or rejection of the ordinance that they're asking the township to consider tonight. We do have representation for the Galleria LLC by Barley Snyder. They're going to be addressing the board, explaining what they're intending to propose, and then it's the determination of the board to whether, accept or reject the potential text amendment. And if you would accept, then it would go through the regular review process where we go to the Spring and Sperry Township Planning Commission, as well as the York County Planning Commission for their review comments prior to it coming back to you. And of course, a public hearing would be held if in fact you would accept it this evening for that review process. So with that said, I'm going to, you do have a memorandum that I did prepare, so that at least gives you an overview of what they have in mind and the position that I took as the Director of Community Development. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the representatives from Barley Snyder on behalf of Galleria Apartments LLC.
Good evening. Tom DeHilla from Barley Snyder. We filed a new text amendment application. As you probably remember, we were here a couple months ago. This is for the project for the new apartment complex that will be built in the mall. We came here back then asking for, one, a text amendment, which was granted, and then also to apply the flexible development overlay district, also approved. As we move forward with that, the property itself sits in your commercial highway district. There's a town overlay district that comes over part of that, or the commercial highway. And then we came in and asked to apply the flexible development overlay. So what we have here is a little bit of a war of which overlay wins. And the language unfortunately isn't very clear, so our proposed text amendment is simply to basically make that clear, that in the event that a flexible development overlay is allowed, it kind of takes precedence over, in particular, the town center overlay. So we're just starting that process. So we're here just to ask that that motion be moved. If it is, then as Randall said, it will be sent to your planning commission for consideration to the county and then back here for an actual here. That's a little, we're just here tonight to just move that hopefully forward.
So just from my perspective, I'm not so sure that it's actually that unclear. I think the underlying reason was to be able to control other portions of the development than what the flexible overlay actually granted you. So I think another thing that concerns me is that this doesn't just apply to this one parcel. This is across, at least my understanding is that this is across all areas zoned the same way.
Not areas zoned the same way, because again, your flexible development overlay is a discretionary overlay that the supervisors have to apply. So anyone coming, it's not a conditional use, it's not, you know, a permitted exception. It is a flexible overlay that you kind of has the flexibility to apply. So it's completely in the supervisor's discretion of whether to apply that flexible overlay and at only certain districts. It's kind of outlined. And this is just to say, if you do that and you grant us, so in our case, like you granted us the right to use the flexible overlay, well then, when we went to apply it, there's the underlying town center overlay that basically overrolled everything under what you granted us the right to go do. So under the flexible overlay, we were allowed to build multiple family apartments in there. Under the town center overlay, that's not a use. So it became inconsistent, so you gave us the right to go ahead and use the flexible overlay to build multiple family, but because we ran into the town center overlay, it doesn't allow that. So we had, so the flexible development says, here's certain setbacks you can do. The overlay said, nope, this is different setbacks. So everything you gave us the right to do under the flexible overlay kind of went out the window and became kind of null and void because we had the town center overlay underneath that.
So is it my understanding that in the comprehensive plan, there's a recommendation for how we change the town center and flexible development in situations like this so that they work in concert rather than removing one and trumping it with a flexible development overlay without the town center?
I think that's generally a fair statement. I know the manager had Marion Hall with CDM Smith look at this as well, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Marion or speak on behalf of the manager, but I think that is the intent, so then not to have conflicting overlays. I think that somewhat defeats the purpose of what Mr. DeHill has spoken to, where you end up having, cancel, the approval canceled out because the other overlay is superseding the one that you just granted. So I think, I understand where he's coming from, now whether the board is on board with that, I don't want to, I don't want to imply that at this point, but I think that the board should be looking at it to create less conflict than more, in my mind, and that knowing that you have been in support of this...
So I'm always worried about unintended consequences of doing something like this when we're looking for a remedy that I think is actually more comprehensive than the one that I have in front of me. And I wouldn't, I don't know, I'm loathe to do something that's going to cause us other problems somewhere else in the township in the time intervening and would rather address this particular issue separately and individually than making a wholesale change.
The safety that you still have is that, again, the flexible overlay is completely in your discretion. It's not, it's not a permitted use, it's not a conditional use. It's not like if an applicant, if an applicant walked in here as a conditional use and said, I hit, you know, there's 10 conditions, I hit them all, you basically have to say yes. The flexible development overlay is not any of that. That is, that's the way your ordinance was set up. And I think that's the intent of this, is it gave you the discretion, complete discretion to say, in this case, it doesn't work and we're not going to allow the overlay to apply. So that's kind of your safety net for the unintentional consequences. This is just basically saying, if you decide as the supervisors, yes, the flexible development works, then the applicant knows that I then need to comply with the requirements of the flexible overlay. And there's requirements in there of setbacks and everything else that we would need to comply with. And that's the issue right now, is two months ago or three months ago, you said, go ahead and use that, but then when we went to apply it, you can't use it because now there's another overlay that kind of interfered with it. So the unintended, unintended consequences, I concern, I think is addressed because, again, this is completely your discretion to apply the overlay or not. Any applicant can come in and you can say, nope, I don't think it works here.
So I can summarize this, Tom. The flexible development overlay as outlined, to go through a process of review by the planning commission and then ultimately to the Board of Supervisors again, would be a tool for the, for the Board of Supervisors to trump a town center overlay if it's in the way of a development project.
Or if there were any other intervening, yes, overlays underneath there. You could say, if I'm applying this one, yes, that one wins.
Would that also, would it apply to other zoning as well? Like R10?
Your ordinance says the flexible development overlay can be applied in various zones throughout your township. And so if an applicant came in and said, I'd like to apply this in this zone, here's what we want to build, here's what we, you know, meet the other criteria of the flexible overlay, you could look at it and say yes or no.
Right.
So there are other districts, not just this, not just this zone that the flexible development overlay can apply to.
There's other benefits to the town center, though. The town center has, requires, you know, the sidewalk networks and requires, and then gives the board more control over what the end product's going to look like.
But again, I think your protection there is that if we're going to use the flexible development overlay, we have to present a plan as part of that application for the flexible. When we came in and said, hey, we'd like to use the flexible development overlay, we have to present a plan for you to look at. You can look at that plan and say, no, we don't like this, we're not going to allow the flexible development overlay to be used. That's solely in your discretion. It's not, again, not a permission, not a permissible use, not a conditional use, it's fully in your discretion.
So Randall, where is the comprehensive plan then on town center overlay? Because I remember some earlier discussions.
Did you read Marion's?
I did. Oh, wait. On this point?
It's under my report.
I thought I did.
Where we are is, CDM Smith is, has draft proposal, which is going to go to the steering committee at the end of this month. But there's going to be, she's proposing a special district for the Galleria area that, that allows residential component, commercial component...
I'm going to just read this and then we can provide a copy to them.
Go ahead.
All right, so, Spring and Sperry Township is in the process of updating its zoning ordinance. The draft ordinance includes proposed changes that seek to streamline development at the Galleria Mall site and reduce confusion about the intent of the flexible development overlay. The draft zoning ordinance proposes a new town center district that would be applied to the Galleria Mall site and adjacent properties. This change would remove the complication of an overlay and permit some new uses, including multifamily residential and continuing care retirement communities. It retains the master planning and conditional use process for most development. The draft ordinance includes clarification language for the flexible development overlay stating that the use flexibility is the intended incentive and that the development provisions of other more stringent overlays shall prevail over those of the flexible... shall prevail over those of the flexible development overlay. So, we're retaining the more stringent overlays of the town center while allowing the intended use of the flexible development. If we say that flexible development trumps town center, then we lose those. So, that's the intent, and I think that's what we asked Marion to do, as we were taking a look at this zoning. So, I think I would be more in favor of some wording that more closely paralleled what we have here in front of us than just saying that the flexible development trumps the town center overlay, if you're understanding what I mean.
You want it to be the opposite, that the town center trumps?
Well, that's the way it is now.
Well, right now, it's not clear. That's kind of where we are.
I'm not so sure that it's not clear. It might not be clear to you, because this is the same group that put the original plan together. And I was, I was actually in on the presentations for all of that, and I actually thought it was pretty clear. So, I guess I'm not sure what part of it isn't clear.
It's not that it's a done deal yet, right? We still have a zoning.
It's not a done deal.
Yeah.
But neither is the proposed language that I think goes further than we're looking to do with the proposal that we have in front of us.
Right. I guess when I read that the director of community development recommends that we accept this proposed action here to conclusion this report, that this was part of that process.
Are you talking about the process of the new zoning?
Of this, of Tom's action with regard to?
Yeah, my action is outside of your new ordinance, just, of course, focusing on your current ordinance, not so much the proposed one. I have not taken a look at your proposed one to see where, how those two, there's going to be need, and I assume she's addressing it, is, you know, like I said, right now, if the more stringent overlay wins, i.e. the town center overlay, as currently drafted, it doesn't allow for multifamily. But then, the flexible overlay does allow for multifamily. So, if the more stringent wins, then even you saying, yes, you can build the multifamily, which you did, now I said, no, you can't, because the overlay, the underlying overlay said, no, you can't, and that's more stringent. So, that's kind of my dilemma right now, is I'm kind of in a rock and a hard place of you gave me permission to do this, but all of those permissions you gave me are super trumped by the overlay, which doesn't even allow for the use that you said I could build in that parking lot. That's kind of.
Meanwhile, we're also working on this super plan, specific to the Galleria.
Yes.
So, I guess that's maybe my bottom line question. How long do you have, Tom, until you need something in place?
I am smack up against my agreement of sale. Underlying agreement of sale. So, for us to wait for that process to play out for another six months is going to be very difficult.
If we did something like, have you review what was provided to us and talk to our consultant that has been working at putting this together, and we could develop a text amendment that is more along the lines that we're looking at for the future of the entire site there, is that something that would be possible to do?
It would be possible, but then I'm going to have to do a text amendment to your town center overlay, which we were kind of said, we were kind of suggested, hands off, don't touch our town center overlay. Because right now, I'd have to go back to your town center overlay, modify that to say that is, that multifamily is allowed there, so that when I get permission under your flexible development to build multifamily, I don't get trumped by the town center overlay that says, you can't build that. So, I'd have to do a pretty comprehensive text amendment, probably to both of those sections. But again, we were kind of told, town center overlay is a little hands off, don't touch that one.
What is the timeline until we get the comprehensive plan and all its zoning?
Well, the comprehensive plan's approved. The zoning, I would say, will be the end of this year.
End of this year.
Yes.
Would it be a problem if we attacked the town center district applied to the Galleria Mall site and adjacent properties immediately, along the lines of what our consultant is recommending, and do that first? And that might solve our dilemma and your dilemma.
So, do like a text amendment to the town center, but apply it, talk to your consultant, and then apply that just to the Galleria?
Change the zoning on the town center district.
Yeah. Do, I'm sorry?
Change the zoning on the town center district to match what is being recommended for that entire district, because that's what the plan is. Am I speaking out of turn here?
No, I think you're trying to, I'm not going to call it, put a square peg in a round hole, but that's kind of what you're doing. You're attacking it from both sides. The other way to look at it is, so under the town center overlay.
Actually, your term is correct. I am trying to put a square peg into a round hole, because that's how ancient woodworkers actually made dowels.
Okay. Learned something. I'll have to look up dowels, but.
Hole in a metal plate, and you take a square peg, and you pound it through.
Got it, got it, all right.
And I think that's what we're trying to do here.
And my dad was a contractor.
I'm just trying to figure out which way I have to go.
You meant a derogatory, though.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. So, with the town center overlay, okay, I believe that if you have a use approved with the underlying district, it's allowed under the town center overlay, right? So, what we have here is, well, what is the underlying district that is sitting here? Is it Commercial Highway, or did the flexible development actually replace?
Commercial Highway.
Commercial Highway. So, if you, if, another way to kind of look at it is, if the flexible development is now sitting there as the new district, then there's really not a need for a text amendment, per se. But you have the town center overlay restrictions sitting on top, which again, if you can come up with a way to present the, you know, a plan, and then whatever's going on with the structure of, you know, whatever conditions are put with the town center overlay are at your discretion, per the ordinance, to impose, waive, et cetera. That might be another way to approach this versus going down the path of a text amendment one way or another. You could certainly do a text amendment in the interim, and then know that you have something coming down the pike that's going to wipe everything away, essentially, but, you know, that's another way to go about this. So, it's just, it's a question of the process that you want to go down.
So, if somebody comes in quickly and says, here's a plan, I register that plan today with the way that it's set up for this development here in one of those adjacent parcels.
I mean, you're subject to whatever ordinances are in place at the time that the plan is submitted and accepted for review, so that, that's.
If we do a text amendment, does that cause an issue, or is that limited to this one parcel?
Well, you can't do that.
I know.
No, no, you can't do that. That floats in the spot zoning. Yeah, so, I'm not telling you to do that, I'm not even getting close to that. But what I am telling you is, yes, if somebody would come in with some plan that is similar in nature to this, yes, that's the path that they could go down.
So, but we do have the ability to approve variances?
The zoning hearing board has the ability to approve variances, but yes, you can absolutely go down that path, too. That's, you know, again, that might be more of a laborious process and a higher bar to.
Yeah, because we would have to ask for a lot of variances in order to fit this in.
So, you know, in my mind, you've got one of three different, well, four. One option is to do a text amendment on the flexible development. One is to do a text amendment on the town center overlay. One is to treat the flexible development as the underlying district, and then say, submit your plan and move forward for review as is, or do nothing.
So, what are the, how long were each one of those?
The other one would be to go after.
Well, five then, a variance as well.
Now, the other one would be to go after changing the zoning in the Galleria Mall site and adjacent properties to what is recommended in the comprehensive plan.
I mean, yeah, you could.
And start that process.
You could do that. You know, again, that would be subject to, it's a zoning change, and you know, you're subject to, I'd have to go look at the timelines on it, but it's not a short process to change the zoning ordinance specifically. Probably in order of expediency, either of the text amendments. In order of expediency, the first option with the flexible development overlay sitting there as the underlying zone, is probably the quickest way to get your plan under review. The next would be the text amendments. The following would probably be the specific zone. And then, obviously, the last is waiting for the overriding.
So, there would be this window between the overriding comprehensive plan zoning change to go into effect and one of those earlier options.
Yes.
That would be the window.
That would be the window. Now, is there going to be a rush to submit all kinds of plans? I, you got me, I don't know. But I understand where you, you know, the unintended consequence I'm always mindful of, and, you know, that is an unintended consequence. You could have a rush of development coming that way, but.
Isn't another unintended consequence, if it's approved, if a text amendment's approved, because they already have their flexible overlay approved. So, if a text amendment's approved, does the board run the risk of not being able to control how they want the site to look that the town center gives them?
Well, that's why you run the process of going to planning commission, and also going to the county planning commission, and then having a hearing, is you have to look at what specifically they're asking for in that text, and then you can make your suggestions as to whether you agree with what's in that text or not.
And tonight, that's the only ask tonight.
Is to start the process. This is not to approve.
Exactly. That's why I don't mind starting the process for.
Yeah, this is, this is just to push the train down the tracks. That's it. You're not approving anything, you're not opining on anything. It's really just to start the process.
But it is giving us a little bit of direction, only because I'm, we, for our project, we currently have a timing issue. So, for you to like, start the process, and then have me come back in 45 to 60 days and be like, nope, we don't like that, I'd rather not do that, if you're going to send me in a different direction, because then I'm going to be, you know, I am going to run into some real problems with my contract of just being able to keep this project alive, which is what we're trying to do, of course, to fix some of the, I think what even your new ordinance is trying to do is to repurpose that mall, so that it doesn't die. And that's what we're, of course, trying to do.
So, again, how long do we forecast that it could be till we have the whole comprehensive plan zoning changes into effect?
End of the year.
End of the year.
And that all depends on, like, we, there's a steering committee meeting scheduled, I think it's the 30th, don't quote me on that date. But then, that's a steering committee and zoning hearing board together to go over all the proposes, proposals. Then, after that, it's going to go to the planning commission, and then to the board. So, that's why I'm saying probably the December meeting. But it could be the January, one of the January meetings, I just don't know.
So, I guess that's why I'm saying, is there a way that we can pull a piece of it out and have it precede the rest of those changes if?
I can certainly ask that question, but I don't know the answer to that right now. If what, does it have too many tentacles to it, that it's changing too many things instead of one grand zoning change?
And that, the timeline also includes advertising, or don't we have to advertise? Yeah, we would, all right. So, end of December or January is possibility is the timeline.
That's the goal.
How's that work, Tom? It's too tight, isn't it? Or it's too long, you don't have enough time.
Well, it sounds like the other one, the other way is still going to take.
Yeah, we're going to be in September and October. I mean, because right now, even if you said, go with this, I'd have to go to.
Planning commission in October.
Hopefully, get all that done in October, then we'd be back here by.
End of October or early November.
Yes, and that's, that's very helpful to us. One other avenue that I see, if you're worried about the unintentional consequences, as your solicitor indicated, that eventually, whatever we do tonight, or if we got done, will be replaced by your new ordinance going forward. If you're worried about us, you know, the flexible development being applied to zones that you don't want it to, I can change my text amendment to say, the flexible development overlay zone only applies to the Galleria Mall, and do a text amendment to cut out all those other sections and narrow it. But, I mean, and I could present that text amendment and say that that one then would apply and supersede. But that, you know, right now, you had it as a, you had it as a tool in your toolbox. You know, it's right now, that's what that flexible development overlay was for. It was supposed to be a tool in your toolbox that if you, the supervisors, decided that it made sense to apply it in the laundry list of districts that it did, you could say yes. But right now, that's a broader, I mean, you know, our underlying Commercial Highway is in there, but there are a number of other districts. So, if that's your concern, I mean, we, one way to skin the cat is that I could change my text amendment to kind of cut all of that out. But I'm not sure that was your intent.
Is an option to grant permission for them to proceed down this path, and in the meantime, set up a meeting with Marion and your group, so she can explain what the draft plan is for that site, to see if what the draft plan, if it's going to totally meet what you're looking for, then, then I think we may have an answer.
My concern, you know, to be quite frank, is timing. I've been in this boat, I did it in Silver Springs, and they had, you, we're going to have this all done by December, and it was June of the next year. And that's my only, you know, you guys have a process, and it's got to play itself out, one of which is public comment. I was at a township meeting that went, I always claim my fame of I was at a township meeting for two days, because we started at 7:00, and we ended at 2:00 in the morning. And even then, they stopped and then had to push it again for the next month, until all those public comments. So, it, you know, I'm, and I've been in front of the supervisors before. I mean, you guys want to hear everybody out, so as you present that, I can see a whole bunch of people in the township showing up, and it's not going to be December, it's going to be March, April, May, June. So that would be devastating for our project to try to get that done. So that's why I like to be able to present a, a text amendment or some solution that, and I do totally appreciate we're trying to fit the, 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 the square peg.
Gentlemen?
Well, I've been on record supporting this process, but I respect Tom's position that if we're not going to really be in supportive of the, the path that he's proposing here until the other path is completely run out, then we're not really serving him and his project. But I still support moving forward with it in lieu of any other alternative right now that'll take effect before you're in. And I am just one of five.
Well, it's my opinion that we granted the flexible overlay so that this project could move forward, not realizing that it would then be in conflict with the underlying town center. Tom, is there any reason to believe that the owner won't grant you a contract extension?
There are reasons to believe.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Yes, they have, we've asked for an extension and we've received it, but also received the other message. That's a little bit of our issues, you know, like I said, we, you know, we presented a plan that got approval and, but it's kind of nullified at this moment because of this little bit of a inconsistency.
Randall, are you comfortable that what Tom has explained about our having complete discretion over the granting of the flexible township overlay to any other piece of property in the, the, in the township is correct? If that's correct.
That is correct.
Then we really don't have any unintended consequences because we can always say no.
I agree, that, that's exactly how I would have interpreted that and how it is being interpreted and such.
And that's why you're recommending that we approve this.
Well, move it forward for the planning review to occur, yes. And that's all I was doing, I, I don't want to, to go beyond that, I'm not, I wasn't at that stage of this process to do so. I mean, I think our.
I'd be in favor of it moving forward.
I think our comprehensive plan, I tried to take the newly adopted document and at least provide some context that it provides. Again, that's a policy document, it's not the ordinance, it's the policy document, but it's the crux that allows you to put the implementing documents in place, which in this case is the zoning ordinance.
Other comments? Don, George?
I think I have to agree with what I've heard, that I'm, based on everything I've heard, I'm in favor at least pushing it along to the next step for review.
Alright. Chair will entertain a motion.
Trying to see how to word it. No, don't do a restart.
I think it's that we accept the proposed petition and text amendment for review.
It's right there.
Very end.
You want to make it?
Doesn't matter. Yeah, sure. Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of consideration of the proposed petition and text amendment for review by the Springins Berry Township Planning Commission and the York County Planning Commission.
Second. I would only ask that in your motion, you say as directed by the township zoning ordinance and the PA municipal planning code. I know it's implied, just.
It's not on there.
It's not on this part of the agenda, it's on the other, that I can't call up right now.
As directed.
As directed by Township Council.
Township zoning ordinance and PA municipalities planning code.
Yes. As amended, I, I accept that amendment, I second that amendment.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do appreciate the, the conversation.
Thanks, Tom.
Next, we have SD 2023 dash 0002 Druck Valley Road preliminary subdivision plan.
Yes, to the board, we have this significant subdivision plan here in front of you tonight as a preliminary plan and the, the consultant team from Montrose Environmental is here to speak to this plan specifically. This is a large residential subdivision that's proposed of 84 single-family lots, 10 open space lots, and it's obviously on Druck Valley Road. And they went through a long process of getting approval from the York County Planning, or the York County Conservation District in regard to their NPDS permitting and their ENS plan. So they had a long process to get here because the planning commission had seen this plan quite some time ago and provided a conditional approval. And the consultants have cleaned up this plan significantly, but there's still some outstanding issues and that's what I brought to the attention of the board and I know Mr. Luciani did the same as well. And they have asked for multiple waivers and they're going to be addressing that to the board tonight. Obviously, it's up to you gentlemen to decide how you want this to move forward, but again, this is a preliminary plan. If, in fact, the board would provide a conditional approval, they would be then subsequently submitting a final phased plan. They're looking at three phases for this project. So they're trying to get through the preliminary plan so they then subsequently can submit one, the first phase of the project. But there is work to be done on the plan that's in front of you tonight, so you're going to have to decide, you know, how far along they need to be from what has been described in both the plan summary as well as the review letter from First Capital Engineering. And with that said, I know we have two engineers tonight representing Montrose Environmental. I think we have the developer, Mr. Miller, as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to those gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Dan Wright from Montrose Environmental. We're before you for the first time, but as Randall said, we've been working hard for a couple of years now, working through the approval process, working closely with John and his, his group. And as Randall said, working with the Conservation District. Early in 2024, we received conditional recommendation of approval from the planning commission for both the waivers and the plan. And Randall, I think rightfully suggested that we wait before coming before the board until we get an understanding of the impact of the review from the York County Conservation District. So we have been.
If I could, I would just like to clarify.
Yes.
One statement, the planning commission doesn't grant conditional approval, the planning commission can only recommend.
They made a recommendation, yes. I apologize if I said it that way.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, we worked hard with the Conservation District and received the NPDS permit. And the Conservation District has been granted authority by the, by PADEP to review the stormwater management for the project and, and make an approval. And so that's important for two of the waivers that we have here because they are related to aspects of the stormwater management design. So what I hope we can do tonight is kind of use Randall's report as a guide to work through the, the six waivers that we're going to talk about and then the outstanding conditions of approval that he lists and we can just work our way right through all those issues. And certainly answer any questions that you have as we go along with the process. So I think I'll pull to, let's see. Okay, so this is the overall subdivision plan and it is showing residential development on Druck Valley Road. It's a unique project because there's a, a residential properties in the center of the property that isn't owned by the developer. So we really have a development on the east side and a development on, on the west side. And so basically, there's certain aspects of the uniqueness of this project that makes us want to come before you with some waivers. So if we could look at the first waiver, which is a request that we grant approval to have a waiver from the 24 by 36 inch plan size to a larger conventional 30 by, 30 by 42 engineering plan size. As it stands now, the project we have developed using the larger plan size and as it is, there's 90 drawings in the set in order to document all the plans, grading plans, utility plans, profiles, details and such. So we're hoping that the board would grant that. If it wasn't granted, we would reconfigure the site into the smaller plan set. The second one is kind of a technical engineering waiver request. Just to clarify, every driveway in, in the development will be designed to have a concrete apron. We actually have this Springins Berry detail for a driveway which shows the concrete apron. So to be clear, every driveway is going to have a concrete apron. John views the entrance road as a driveway too. So we talked about how the entrance should be configured and John was discussing the possibility of it being concrete. We feel that it's better that the, the bituminous paving of Druck Valley blends in better with the bituminous paving for our main road in, which is, which is pretty typical. So some of the things he was concerned about to make sure that the, the walkway that runs across the frontage would be ADA acceptable, our grading plan demonstrates that that is the case. So we felt the only way that we could deal with this and, and, and have the materials that we want is to ask for a waiver from this. Our position is that that concrete apron requirement was more appropriate for a specific house and a driveway, but we agree that the best way to move forward with this materials would be to ask for a waiver. Okay? So the next waiver request has to do with cul-de-sac and this is an important one and we spent a ton of time during the planning stages dealing, you know, with this. Again, it's a unique property and I think instead of using this, if you don't mind, I can speak louder and talk to the plan if that's okay?
Well, you need to have your microphone because I can't hear.
No, that's not going to work. Can I, can I say one other thing? Did we skip one?
Yeah, I think we've gone through two and now we're on number four.
Okay, so I, I apologize, let's, let's look at three. So basically, the third one, we, originally when we came into the Township Planning Commission, we had a plan that showed two points of entry. One of the points of entry was the current location and the second point of entry was in this 50-foot right-of-way area here. We had a scoping meeting with PennDOT because Druck Valley is a PennDOT highway. And in that scoping meeting, PennDOT was very clear on what we could and couldn't do relative to access to Druck Valley. They were very clear in saying that they wanted one access where we're currently showing it because that had the best site distance. They also understand that Radio Road was there, but they specifically wanted that converted into a emergency access road and to design the development so that the houses that are located on Radio Road would now not access Druck Valley where it's a really unsafe situation and redirect them to the more safe, you know, entrance.
Point out which one's Radio Road and where Druck Valley might, this drawing is kind of washed out.
I'm sorry, what?
Which one is Radio Road?
Okay, Radio Road is an existing, it's basically a driveway for a few houses that's located on the far right. Yeah, so it's located on the far right of the development and there's a few houses there. And you can see to the left of that is where our main road comes out, much better site distance there. We have Dan Thornton here, who is our traffic consultant, and if there's any concern about what was, what was discussed in that scoping meeting or any concern with this waiver request.
Where's, where's the emergency?
Yeah.
The people online can't see you pointing, so it has to be with this cursor.
Okay, so right now, Radio Road is the far most right drive and that is an unsafe condition. You really take your, you know, it's a dangerous situation actually making lefts out of, of Radio Road. So it's proposed to gate off that road, provide it far enough away from Druck Valley Road so that if it's needed to be opened up, the, the fire marshal can come in, open the gate, there'd be a Knox box there for them. But for the most part, it won't be used unless there's an emergency. If for whatever reason, there's, there's a situation with traffic not being able to come in from the main road. So that's what PennDOT recommended in their, their scoping. We actually would have preferred to have two drives, we had two driveways at one time, but then the only way we're going to get our highway occupancy permit is if we configure the, the entrance, entrances onto Druck Valley as recommended by PennDOT.
What's the distance from Druck Valley to either of the two cul-de-sacs down in the bottom of the picture?
It, it's approximately 2,000 feet and I'd like to talk about that too. Basically, what we have done with this design is come up with ways that we would have two alternative methods for emergency vehicles to come. For instance, in the front, we've, in the front, we've created a loop where emergency vehicles could come one way, the emergency access drive provides a secondary loop for emergency vehicles if for some reason there would be an obstruction. When we come through down on the east side, we've created another loop where this cul-de-sac road here connects up to the extension of Radio Road and creates a, another loop here. A third loop has been created on the western side in this area here. So that provides alternative ways for emergency vehicles to get to some house that might be under fire. Each one of these smaller cul-de-sacs that, that branches off of these loops are less than 600 feet. This one here, the one on the west side and the one above. So one, one of the things we looked at from the very beginning was, is there a way that we could connect the, this cul-de-sac here with this, therefore creating one big, large loop? And physically with the grades that are out there, it's physically unable to, to do it. The grade, the grade of that road would be exceed 20% grade, which, which far exceeds the township's allowable road slope. So with that, with the inability to connect the east side to the west side in this lower area, we had no choice but to come, come through this small area, create a loop as quickly as we could and then have a cul-de-sac. as we could, and then have a cul-de-sac off to the bottom. On the west side, we came down, created a loop as quickly as we could, and then another cul-de-sac down to the bottom. So it's our hope, considering this unique situation where we have, you know, a large area of property that we don't own, and since we don't have the ability to connect these cul-de-sacs at the bottom, by providing these three separate loops, that provides alternative ways that an emergency vehicle can get around, then having some smaller cul-de-sacs off of those loops is what we ultimately ended up with. So because of these unique situations, that's why we're asking for that waiver. All right?
So do you have a picture of this, so that shows the whole Radio Road going through all the way back to Hay Meadow?
And see how this fits?
Or anything? Because if I am understanding, does Radio cross, what is it, your Tilton Road?
Yeah, Radio Road right now is located right here in the far right.
Okay.
Right now, it comes down here to the south, and then actually comes through here and then turns up and goes up in this direction. Okay? So we actually have designed this so that this cul-de-sac right here connects to Radio Road and creates a loop right through here.
Do you have an image that shows the whole Radio Road going through there?
I don't have an image, but it's...
Or a drawing?
It's an existing, well, it's shown on the drawing, it's existing 10 to 12-foot wide driveway, paved driveway.
These houses that are located here on the east side currently have driveways going out to them, and then there's an access drive that goes off to the other.
I think this is it.
How long was that parcel?
Charles?
Mr. Luciani?
I think this is it, and I think it comes down here, and then it goes over here.
How deep was that parcel above where the county building is?
That's what he's describing, that's Radio Road. And then it forms a loop.
What's that, the extension of Memory Lane? Where it comes around the corner at Heritage Valley there. They only had one way in and out.
Oh, that was about 800 or 1,000 feet.
So this is 2,000 feet to the entrance.
Yeah, but it needs to be understood that there's two means of access. It's not just one long road that goes 24 feet. Purpose of limiting the length...
On one side, on the other side, you've got probably well over 1,000 feet from that intersection all the way out to that cul-de-sac. Your loop internal isn't the exit.
We have a loop here, and then there's a secondary loop right here. So there is a small section there.
No, that secondary loop has no access outside of that development.
No, but if there was some kind of obstruction in this road here, there'd be a secondary way of getting around...
Bring it up to the T-intersection, either right there or just to the right of that, to the very next T-intersection.
Okay.
Where's your loop?
Well, there literally is...
A way out from there.
There is a loop that comes around here, there's a loop here, now there's...
No, no, just the first loop, where does that go?
There's a main entrance drive in proposed, and then there's an emergency access drive. For whatever reason...
You're... I don't think understanding me.
Right now, existing Radio Road is proposed to be an emergency access drive. The whole purpose of that...
That doesn't get over to the left-hand side at all?
Correct.
Yes, from that...
There's a loop here.
That right, put back where your hand, right there, that intersection.
Yes.
How far is that to the cul-de-sac down here? That entire section of the development has a single point of failure right there, multiple thousand, more than 1,000 feet in.
Well, I...
Because you said 2,000 from the entrance all the way to that cul-de-sac.
Right.
That loop that you're pointing out in there is just a blocked-in loop that can't go anywhere.
Well, there is a section that is, you know, I would say 700 feet between here and here. And then once you get to this point, again, we've created a loop where we can create a loop. And once you get to the loop, then there's alternate ways to get around, you know? So that's... I see the hesitation, but it really is a unique project, and the loops that we were able to create are, you know, it's important to understand, there's loops really give the emergency access, you know, people, alternative ways to get around there.
You have a loop caught within an area that has a single point of failure.
So...
Yeah, but...
What did I hear the zoning hearing board say one time? The condition of a piece of land can't be the reason for not fulfilling the need that is in the underlying zoning for that area. Like, if it says that you can't be over 600 feet, and you tell me there's no other way to do it, that's not a reason to grant approval of that.
Right. Well, the purpose of the 600 feet on a cul-de-sac is so that you limit a situation where you have one single access, you know, just to a cul-de-sac. All right?
So my point would be that if you have an issue near that T-intersection, right up in the middle there, either one of those two, whether it's a fire where you've got fire trucks out there blocking the road off or not, nobody down that cul-de-sac, whether there's a loop there or not, they can run around that loop all day long, they're not going anywhere. They cannot get out.
Well, the purpose for limiting the length of the cul-de-sac is so that you can provide safe access. And in a situation like this, the chances that there's an obstruction at the same time that there's an emergency, it's the chances of that are, you know, very rare. The statistics would be very rare on that. So...
Yeah, that's not a chance we're willing to take, though. But I think that's why we're here. We want to keep this... The ordinances are there for a reason, to protect people that we're going to let live in houses there. And you're kind of conflating the idea of two points of access to a development with the cul-de-sac. And that's like, that sure looks like a giant cul-de-sac to me with, maybe not technically a cul-de-sac, but it sounds like a pretty dangerous place to live.
Probably another 400, 1,200, maybe 300, 1,500, from here to there, using the scale.
Well, I must say, I'm not, I really am not seeing where the danger falls in. I can acknowledge that there's a section where there's a single point, but certainly there's multiple ways that the vehicles can get around, and we've created these three loops that allows for it, so.
But can, may I say something?
Please, Mark.
So let's just pick lot 24, the one I'm looking at's lot, house number 24.
Which one is that?
It's that T-intersection. And I think this is what some of the board members... So say, say there's an incident at one of those houses, lot 24, let's just pick lot 24. And it is a fire, and the fire company has the road totally shut down to handle that house fire. Everyone to the south of that would not be able to either get home or leave to go to work, pick up their kids, whatever it would be, while that house, while the roads closed down for that emergency. The way I look at this...
That's why we don't permit cul-de-sacs, and you can say there's a loop on there, but that loop still can't get out. That's part of the cul-de-sac. That's why we don't allow it. The one off of Memory Lane extended, John, we didn't allow that. And there was even the potential for access into that other neighborhood, and the neighbors there would not allow travel through the property. And what that was like, that was about 1,200 feet, not 2,000 feet.
That's true.
And there was only one way in and out of that proposed development, and it did not get approved. I'm just, I'm not seeing how this is a good idea.
I mean, this is, not quite sure where to go from here. I mean, if there's a fire there, I don't know that they would close off the entire road.
But you don't know that they wouldn't, and...
Or need to.
Or need to, and if there's a medical emergency with somewhat ELS up in that cul-de-sac area...
Guy has a heart attack.
Yeah, I mean...
So there's no way to connect the two bottom cul-de-sacs because of slope?
Correct. Like I said, we looked at that from the very beginning. It's extreme grade difference between them, and it really is not something that is possible.
What about even higher up?
What's that?
Um...
Yeah, we don't...
They don't control the immediate property. I mean, I do appreciate the effort to try to redevelop this site and create more residential housing here in the township. I want to be clear, it's just, the track does provide a little bit of challenge from a topography, topographical standpoint.
I mean, personally, I'm not willing to give up safety of the residents because you don't have any other way to provide access to them. That's not really an excuse.
And I hear that. One thing, a design that I have done on other projects, for instance, I had a project that had a single road in to a P-loop for what was a townhouse development. And in that case, we worked with the township and created a boulevard section that would allow one side of it to be shut down by the fire, but then there would be that second one. Could we consider putting a boulevard section in those sections that are single-loaded, thereby creating two different access points? That would address your issue.
Access points have to be separated by how much, John?
What do you mean?
As far as the distance between the in and the out? Well, ultimately, it comes down to Druck Valley, but if you're talking about an internal section where there'd be a boulevard and a wider road, I'm not sure I follow what your intent is, that you would have a boulevard within it.
Yeah, if you had a wider road that would have a grass strip between it, and you'd have the ability then to, you know, under that scenario where someone in the lower area needed to get out, if the fire facilities were blocking up the one lane, there'd be a separate lane that would be able to give you the ability to get out. And we're talking about two different sections of single-loading. The one we're talking about here, and then a second one on the eastern side here. If we provided a boulevard section there and a boulevard section from here to here, that would address that concern. Obviously, considering, you know, where we are, we, considering this discussion, we're not going to ask for you to weigh in on this waiver at this time until we come up with an alternative design that would address that. But that, it would be, I would be helpful to get some feedback as to whether that is least worth pursuing.
The length in the ordinance is 600 feet. We're talking, what, 1,500 feet from the second T-intersection there out to that cul-de-sac? I mean, that's almost double that, or that's more than double the length. It just, I don't know, to me, it doesn't sound like a good idea. The large, open parcel at the bottom, and then that rectangular one right in the middle of the map, those are not your properties.
Correct. Yep.
And there's no way to connect that semi-loop over on the right, that kind of elbow, yeah, right up there.
Yeah, that is...
Back to the other road on the other side. And that would at least get you Radio Road in and out on one side, and the main entrance in and out on the other side. And you could have the circular path from anybody caught in that big loop in that whole left-hand side around over to Radio Road to get out if there was something that was bottlenecking up there. But I don't know that you even have the ability to do that.
Is there any other comments relative to the boulevard concept? You know, I understand Mr. Smalley's position on it, is there any other feedback considering this unique site?
I mean, I'm open to alternatives. But public, I share the same concern that the chairman does with regard to the public
All right. I think I've cleared a direction that we have to come up with an alternative solution before we're going to be able to get a waiver from y'all on the cul-de-sac length. Does it make sense for us to go through and try to get your opinion on the other waivers at this point? Or do you have an opinion one way or the other, whether we should seek after that, Bob? Or how would the board like to proceed? I'm happy to, you know, get them in front of you, talk through them, and talk through some of the other issues, if you would like to do that. Understanding that we're not going to get a approval one way or the other on the cul-de-sac. How would the board like to proceed? How would the board like to proceed?
Man, I, I have another concern with, um, with loading ratios for total drainage area. I mean, you're at 50 to one.
Okay, I can, let's talk about that because that, that's, that's where.
I mean, that, that just jumped out at me as.
Yeah, but we're not 50 to one. That's, that's the only thing. So, um, basically, um, let's talk through the, the last two waivers here at, at a minimum. Uh, as I stated before, the Conservation District has approved our design. So what happened was, uh, a while ago, DEP provided regulations that informed stormwater management ordinances that the municipality's incorporated in. The five to one ratio, impervious coverage. It's the, the drainage area to a detention basin. They're saying that the impervious coverage shouldn't be more than one part in five for the whole cold, uh, the whole drainage area. And DEP put out a position paper after they worked through the reality of those requirements. And they concluded that a more appropriate ratio was 10 to one. Okay? So what our, what our calculations actually show is that in all cases, we are less than 10 to one. And, and there's one drainage area where it's actually 12 to one. But that's because a good part of that drainage area comes through those existing houses that we don't have any control over. So, um, when you, if you were to take their, their area out, then that actually is 9.7, you know, ratio. So, uh, it's not 50 to one. It's actually, um, you know, less, less than 10 to one per the, the D, the PADP white paper. So it's a reasonable request, in my opinion. And then the other one was the eight to one ratio. That's the, um, total drainage area to each one of the, to each one of the detention basins. So the idea there is they don't want to have all the stormwater management collected and just, and directed into one big basin. They want the, the site and this, the stormwater management designed in such a way, we have multiple basins throughout the design, which is what we do. But DEP decided that it was important to have this 10 to one ratio for impervious coverage. And they realized that it really didn't make sense to have a limitation of eight to one. So they, they actually recommend that there be no ratio for, for, um, the drainage area. So again, we, our, our design was reviewed and approved by the Conservation District. And we think these are reasonable, uh, design waivers considering the way DEP is, is reviewing these. So.
So, John, are you okay with that?
If, if the, if the ratios and that, you know, DEP that has the five to one, eight to one, if the ratios are actually 10 to one, I'd be okay with that. But the report that I reviewed had much higher loading ratios than, than, uh, what was stated here. That's the impervious. How about total loading ratio? What, what's the total loading ratio? Cause that too is important. And I, and that, that's where, you have it right there. Overall loading ratio, basin 10, 19, basin 11, 38, basin 20, 43, basin 30, 44. Basin, you know, so when you start getting into big numbers like that. Overall. I, I read it and it, and it, I.
Says that if we follow certain things, which we have, that the loading ratio for the overall loading ratio is, doesn't really matter that much.
That, that's not what I read. That's not what I read in the Dominic Rocco documentation, so.
Well, he, he agreed that the, that the impervious, um, ratio should be 10 to one and said there shouldn't be a limitation on the, uh, ratio relative to drainage areas. It just is the.
I think the overall is, is a, is an important one also. Because if, let's say it's meadow and it's hay and all that in a, in a precipitation event, all that material washes downstream, that high loading ratio is going to have an impact on the length of life and the ability for that basin to function in the future. You gotta look at the, the overall ratio. And I, that's all the documentation I've seen. And right now, the DEP regs, they say it as eight. The township has allowed higher numbers than that, but certainly not as high as what your overall numbers are showing. And that, that's the problem. I think that, that the overall numbers, that's the, you know, it effectively, when I said 51, yeah, there's a 46.01 to, to one, that's, uh, 46 acres going to one acre of basin area. I see that as problematic.
I guess on this waiver too, we have some work to do to work with John to get some.
Sounds like.
Consensus on that one. But I do believe that the DEP, uh, white paper position is on our side. And we'll have to coordinate with John on that.
So, yeah, if you guys can work that out.
Yep.
And then, I don't know how you're going to solve the, I mean, I, I know you keep talking about these circles. But you really have two points of access here. And then you have almost 15 to 1,800 feet out to the cul-de-sac. And whether you have a loop over here or not, it's, it's all part of what can't get out. Is you really have one point of access from that T-intersection coming off of Druck Valley Road all the way through that entire development. So, and you talk about boulevard. If you were at 700 feet or 750 or 800 feet, I, I don't know. I, it, it wouldn't seem like it's big a deal to work through. But when you're talking about double to triple that for the length in there, and then you add loops onto it with more houses, you're actually compounding the issue that you could have. So, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to give that some thought and work through that.
All right. Any other comments? I think, uh, this stage, we're gonna have to do some work and, and get back to you. At a later meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you have to take a table on?
Table?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, move for, uh, tabling SD 2023 dash 002. Druck Valley Road Permian Subdivision Plan, Beacon Road, Valley Road, Druck Valley Road LLC.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any communication from supervisors? This isn't your week for solicitor's report, is it?
It is not.
Managers report.
I do not have anything to report.
Any questions? Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 2025 dash 47. Authorizing amendments to Article 3, Section B of the York Area United Fire and Rescue Commission. Amended Charter Agreement dated October 17, 2017. It was tabled at the August 28 board meeting. I think our solicitor has reviewed some of the requested changes and, uh, had some questions on, uh, several of those items that I would actually, for me personally, I would like to see them addressed before we would agree to this resolution.
Are, are these questions for Yalfer's counsel? Is that who could answer those questions?
I, I believe that, that the solicitor for Yalfer is the one that, um, drafted the amendments. So yes, they would be, I, I need the context on, on the, uh, on the edits. And then, um, and then we can, I can come back to you with, with the opinion on that.
Seems reasonable. I guess I'd make a motion then to table any action tonight on Resolution 2025 dash 47.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any old business items that anyone would like to discuss this evening? New business authorization for township manager to execute, execute letter confirming date and time of public hearing for liquor license transfer on October 9, 2025 at 6:45 PM. Good with that?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move for authorization for township manager to execute a letter confirming the date and time of a public hearing for the liquor license transfer on October 9, 2025 at 6:45 PM.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And wow, sorry, Brandy. Discussion on allowing alcohol at certain township-sponsored events at Springersbury Park.
Mr. Chairman, Brandy and I have been working on different things to enhance the experience at Springersbury Park, bring more events and, and the like. And this subject has come up several times. So I asked her to put a presentation together for the board and we'll go from there. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Brandy.
Good evening, last but not least, I guess. I'll try to make this quick and painless. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me in the middle or, or I can answer questions at the end. So, as Mark said, allowing alcohol at selected township-sponsored events at Springersbury Township Park. Wanted to, I know that's the longest title ever. But I wanted to make sure that, understand that not trying to change anything in regards to all of the events that are held here are township-sponsored. And that is something that's not changing. And this is specifically to be held at this park only. The reason that, or not. Enhancing the social experience and fun. Moderate alcohol consumption can help people relax, enjoy social interactions. It contributes to a more festive environment and encourage a positive social dynamic. It also serves an audience and a genre that we're not currently serving. With that, you know, there's a lot of economic benefits. Allowing the sale of the alcoholic beverages can generate revenue for the park, for event organizers, and then can attract more attendees, boosting our revenue for our local businesses and the economy around us. It also aligns with modern social norms for all you Penn State fans. They have that in the stadium. People's Bank Park currently does. If you've ever been to Rutter's or Sheetz, um, it's becoming more and more of a, a social norm. Reflecting the, a more trusting and less restrictive approach to our public recreation. Some examples of that. Specifically, Long's Park does a summer music festival, um, similar to The Sounds of Summer. Not created quite as great, in my opinion, but, um, they do have food trucks with their beer garden there that they have each week. They have different venues come in. Suds and Songs, which is an event that's held in Red Lion, is pretty big. They've been doing that for years as well. The Glen Rock Arts and Brew Fest, as I had mentioned earlier, Rutter's. Dolphin County does the Jazz and Wine Festival. Sickman's Mill does river tubing, but they also have Jimmy's Juice, which is specifically to their establishment. Springersbury Township, prior to me being here, had the Taste of Springersbury at Saturday in the Park, in which it was allowed. The Appel Performing Arts Center currently does it. There is a Jazz and Wine Festival out of state, just to share. And then some upcoming local events. If you'd like to see how other people do it, obviously, we missed Gesberg Wine Festival. And maybe you didn't, maybe you attended, but, um, the New Freedom Fest, September 20th. The Snack Town Fall Fest in Hanover, September the 20th. Shrewsbury's Fireman Fall Fest and the Oktoberfest that's happening on the 18th. What we're recommending is a responsible approach, not prohibition. Instead of blanket prohibition, we allow for responsible consumption with appropriate regulations and safeguards. We want to trust adults to make appropriate choices, to demonstrate respect and foster a healthy or drinking culture. I'm not sure if you're aware, but people do drink in the park now. Some, sometimes we see it, sometimes we don't. Mostly Rutter's cups that we see after are, would be the, the tell-all. We work with an excellent team of officers here at Springersbury Township to have action plans. We would, we have already met with them, spoke to them, asked them a lot of questions, got their feedback when putting this together. We are not proposing that the public can just bring alcohol in, but that we would provide the opportunity for them to partake in a more controlled environment. The partner process, I think, is probably the most important process there. What we're trying to do is take the liability away from us as much as possible by partnering with others who have a liquor license, who are going to take on the majority of the responsibility. There is an application process that they have to go to. They'd have to submit to their compliance directors to even have those types of events with us. We'd work with the PLCB. They have certain regulations on when they have to do things. And we would oversee that process to, similar to what we do for food trucks. We go above and beyond what's required currently for food trucks. We have, um, serve safe. We have a million dollar insurance policy that we require, um, we require them to, um, also have, uh, their state license. So we have different processes that not everybody has. So we go above and beyond. And much like that, we would do that here to ensure, um, we check dates and spreadsheets and those types of things to make sure it's up to date. Some things that I learned during this partner process is I did have the opportunity to meet with the Yard Group, which is the York Area Rec Directors. And I spent some time before the meeting, um, coming up with questions and asking them, hey, who does this, who doesn't do this? What did you learn? What are things that you would do differently? Are you for it? Are you against it? And so I got some feedback from our local rec directors and some things that they learned that I thought were, inventive, were number one, the very first thing they do is they invite the state to their events. They specifically, not only are they doing the licenses, but they invite them to the events so that they can sit at the door and they can look to make sure that you're checking the IDs correctly. Do they come to every single one? No, but they usually do in the beginning and they help you. So instead of it being that, you know, uh, I don't want to get in trouble, it's more about that partnering process. So inviting them in. The other part was doubling down on insurance. So even though we asked them to take the liability, every single time that we do a township-sponsored event, we would speak directly with our insurance company and the same thing, partner with them. Are there things that we need? What is it that we need to make sure that we're covering liability? And then the last one was to wristband everyone. That, that's the biggest takeaway that everyone had. Whether you're drinking or not drinking, if you're over the age of 21, they ensure that those wristbands aren't the flimsy paper wristbands, but more. but more like the tight plastic ones that you can't get off whether you're drinking or not. The next part is just an example of the letter that you would receive. I shared that prior to this. I'm not going to go through that, but that's something that the PLCB would send to you. This is all the requirements that, that someone with a liquor license would have to have. And then, of course, like I had said, much like food trucks, we would have internal policies. We'll have strict regulations and responsible alcohol management plans in place. That includes the checking of the IDs, the training servers. We would require them to all be ramp certified. They would have to provide us with a plan. So anyone that's in there would have to provide us with their written plan and obviously providing non-alcoholic options. We would designate alcohol consumption areas that can help manage the flow and potential issues related to alcohol. We would ensure compliance with local and state police. Of course, we would meet with Springersbury Township before any event like we do already to have an operations plan in order. We would take safety precautions and provide transportation options for intoxicated individuals such as Uber, Lyft. And we would utilize, obviously, like I had said, partners liquor license to limit our liability. Does anyone have any questions?
Brandy, could you flip back to this, one of the early screens? Maybe the one, no, two down there, from the three down from there. Keep going, right, next one. That one there, I think it was. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, just, I, I just, just a comment. As one of those hundred, seven hundred, eight thousand people at State College every fall Saturday when there's a home game. Trusting adults to make responsible choices. Sounds like a good talking point, but having personally witnessed many, many people being escorted out of the stadium every game, I, I think that was a stretch to think that we can trust all adults to make responsible decisions. Just, just a comment on that particular one.
Well...
Yeah, the next bullet down is probably the more important one.
But I'll also say too, that, you know, when you use State College or Penn State as an example of being able to sell alcohol, I think their motivation, I know their motivation is financial. I mean, at fifteen or eighteen dollars a can, I see why they want to sell alcohol at the games and I assume they sell plenty of it. So I, I'm not sure their motivation would be the same as ours when it comes to allowing alcohol.
No, I don't think that theirs is the same as ours. Penn State was more of an example of how it's becoming more and more normalized, whether it be college events as opposed to professional events. I will note that I didn't say all adults. I said trusting adults. There's definitely, there's definitely a process and I think that that is where the township-sponsored events comes into play. There's definitely a difference between Penn State football and a Jazz and Wine Festival.
Sure.
A different crowd, a different age group. I think that the events that we're looking for are more of not the teenage, early twenty-one crowd.
I think it was mentioned right before this presentation that this idea keeps resurfacing. I'm wondering who's the driving force? Who, who are we having community members who say we should have this? Where, where does this come from? The rec committee, is that where it's originating?
So, yes, it's come up in the rec committee. I actually would say at every single concert, it comes up. Whether I'm saying, I'm so sorry, you can't have that here. But, you know, putting that away at asking about events, hey, there's a Jazz and Wine Festival down the road. Is there something that you'd be interested in? Or, hey, they're doing a Brew Fest. Is that something that Springersbury Township would bring to you? So we do get calls quite often about, are you interested in having those types of events here? What's the next thing at, at Springersbury? What kind of ideas do you have in the future for growth? And I think that it is a market that we're not hitting. We do serve a senior market. We serve young children. We do serve, you know, adults in, in a different way, but this is something that we're not currently. We do a lot of arts, we do a lot of crafts. We do, obviously, music, sporting events, but this is something that we haven't done yet other than the Taste of Springersbury prior to my arrival.
Brandy, are you thinking of a single event, like a wine and beer event? Or are you thinking that over the course of the summer, we would go from not having alcohol to having alcohol at our events?
I would say neither. I would say somewhere in between that. I do, no, I do not believe that all of our current events, I'm not proposing that we make it all alcoholic for all the time. I don't want to pigeonhole myself and say, oh, it's only going to be one. But just like everything, when we, when I started the Fall Fest, you know, Mark said, hey, do you want, you know, I would like you to add, the board wants us to add something new. So...
The beer trucks aren't going to pull up to the Little League game.
No, absolutely not.
My own personal opinion is one of the absolute stars of Springersbury Township is the family-friendly events that we have. And I wouldn't like to see alcohol at family-friendly events. The Fourth of July fireworks, even the concerts, I'm not sure would be appropriate for them. But an individual event that was for that purpose, I, I wouldn't see. Although, Chief, I would like to hear from you. I, I can't imagine that's something you'd be dying to have happen.
We did discuss this at length. And we did voice our concerns from the law enforcement side of things. I agree with you. I don't think that every event, and I think Brandy agrees as well, not every event is appropriate for this. I think that with the proper safeguards in place and doing it in the proper manner, most of which she had on her slideshow tonight.
Sure.
I think that we could do it in a safe manner, yes. Am I going to say it's not going to cause additional work? No, it's not. It, it, it will most certainly, from the planning perspective alone, there'd be more planning going into each event. But I think that it could be handled in a safe manner and I think that we could tap into that market that she's looking to tap into.
Yes, my only question would be liability. What does it do to our...
So I, I, I think Brandy's laid out some of the key components. You know, if this is something the supervisors are willing to entertain, you'd have to amend your ordinance because it's prohibited strictly, or it's expressly prohibited there. And then a policy would be written, require an indemnification agreement. Getting the special events permit, if it's a one-off type of event with the L C B, would, would be required. You know, they, they being whoever's providing the alcohol are also serving the alcohol. So you'd have the drab shop liability moving to them, not, you're not having township employees pulling keggers for, for the residents to come by, right?
No, that's not what I'm proposing.
So, you know, I, I, I think a combination of all of those plus, you know, there, there are liquor-specific insurance riders that, that, that can be put or required to be put in place. Now, it's not a hundred percent guaranteed and I'm not, but, but those would be the types of things that I'd want to see in a policy to limit the liability. And then, of course, can't get any closer to our wonderful police force than right here. So it's kind of like having the jail in the Philly Stadium.
True.
You're, you're kind of right there. Maybe...
Not even close to that.
I didn't say, I said kinda. It's like a trusted adult at a Penn State game.
Philly fans.
I'm just...
You're really getting hammered tonight, but thank you.
I'd like to know what Rudy has to say about this.
Well, we could certainly, we could request that he show up and do a presentation. But those would be the things that I would look to or, or look for in terms of liability protection. That's about the most that you can, you can do.
And just to go back to, to address your concern, Bob. I, in no way, shape or form, when these ideas came up, did myself or, or did I present to Mark and say, hey, let's put this all the time. I want these at all of our different events. I do think that there are a few specific concerts that a beer garden might work at, but generally, speaking, no. I don't think that that should be changed. Do I think that there's the opportunity for revenue in different events? Yes. Would it just be one? I don't want to, again, I don't want to pigeonhole myself, but there is only two people in the department. So the capacity for more and more events, I, I don't know what the capacity is quite yet. Specifically, we added the Makers Market this year, Rock the Park, Library in the Park, extra day for Saturday in the park, another Makers Market, Craft Fair, another Library in the Park today, which we were also Clifford the Big Red Dog, pickleball tournament, you know, those types of things. So, you know, we, we added a lot of things and we don't have a calendar to have twenty-five alcoholic events type thing. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, yes, it might be more than one. I just don't know how many yet.
Well, I don't think we have any action on this.
No, all I kind of was looking for...
Really good discussion.
Was to have a discussion and if it was a hard no, we were going to stop. If it wasn't a hard no, we were going to continue on doing some of the things that the solicitor mentioned and, and fleshing those kinds of things out. But we, I didn't want to waste the time doing all that if it was a hard no.
I for one would like to see a plan.
I agree with Supervisor Bishop.
I, I guess what I'll add to the conversation, and I'm not adamantly opposed to it. This is, certainly isn't a hill that I would die on whether we do or don't do this. But just, I'll speak for the family-friendly people of the township who appreciate going to events and not having drunks walking around and all the things that come with alcohol consumption. I'll just say that I'd prefer we not get involved with alcohol in the parks, allowing it, permitting it. But again, I'm, I'm not a hard no. I, I, not trying to spoil people's fun. If, if that's what they think they need to have a good time, then so be it. But...
Well said. George, I agree with you a hundred percent.
All right, so I'm with, I'm with Don. I'd like to see a plan and it sounds like the rest of the board here is not opposed to that.
No, can look at a plan.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that takes us to the end of our agenda. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.